And I respect my friends and neighbors on the advisory board very much for the difficult situation that you're in. I understand that there's a process here. And I empathize with the slippery slope argument that exists. I would implore people to consider the fact that this is genuinely different, okay? This is not us versus them and how much money that the property is worth where these houses are. This is a genuinely different situation that started when a neighbor and I were in Laura Harbottle's office in 2003. In 2003. And the roads were done, and if it weren't for the convoluted situation we're in, the roads would have been accepted when the roads were done. This already would have happened. We understand, those of us in the neighborhood, understand that this means that we go to the end of the line. We're not looking for a free walk here. We just feel that this really is genuinely something that if things had gone differently, if i's have been dotted and t's had been crossed, not by those of us in the neighborhood, but by other people, that there wouldn't be some sort of upcharge or betterment required. So I would ask that when people are called to vote tonight, that they empathize, respect for due process, as the advisory board has pointed out, but as I say to my kids a lot, a million times a day, you're given an opportunity to do the right thing or to do the wrong thing. Let's do the right thing for the right reason and acknowledge that this is not a normal situation, and give your friends and neighbors a fair shake. Thank you very much.
Gentlemen at the center of the mic.
Hi, Greg Langdon, 35 Walnut Hill Drive. So I'd like to build on top of what Bob was saying. The situation, and Rick Murray described it a bit here, it's truly an unusual set of circumstances. We were not set up as a private way. As we've already talked about, Modern Continental, the original developer, did go under. They'd set up the roads to be public roads going forward. They had to post the $2.6 million bond to help get the work done in the, at that time, what was considered rare event that they could potentially go under. In fact, they went under. It took an awful long time and a lot of work and dedication on the part of many boards in town, on the part of some of the residents, on the part of selectmen, to figure out how to navigate this very unique situation. We had residents trying to assist but not named on the bond. We had the bond between the town and, between the bond between the town and the insurance company that needed to be resolved, and they had to figure out how to work their way through that. That took years just to navigate what the steps were, what we needed to do to get estimates put together to complete the roads. It was a $800,000 to $900,000 filing that we made for the bond. When that was completed, all the work was completed, we continued to work with the town, various boards, over the last six years at this point. And like I said, we had started this back in '03. If none of those things had, if none of those circumstances had been there, we would have been easily able to have gone right for acceptance, right when we were completed in 2003. But it was a work of a number of folks from the town, from all of the boards, and from the residents that got us to the point where we could sift our way through this and navigate through. So to Bob's point, we're not looking for anything special. We're not looking to be an exception. It was just an unusual delay that took us this far. So with that, I ask you guys to consider the fact that it's not, it's not a special set of circumstances we're looking for here. It is just, it took a tremendous amount of time to deal with a company that went bankrupt, various town boards, an insurance company holding the bond, and all of the work to get the actual roads improved to the tune of $850,000, which did not come from the town or from any taxpayer here. So with that, I thank you.
Gentlemen at the center of the mic.
Christopher Kelly, 4 Pineview Drive. I'll keep this very brief. I'd first like to thank the advisory committee for their due diligence on behalf of the residents of the entire town. Living on Pineview Drive, I pay an assessment of $12,000. Myself and my neighbors followed due process under the town's policy. We were not, we were a private way. We wanted to become a public way. My neighbors, some of them have been in those homes for 40 to 50 years. My understanding is, is that quite frankly, there were neighbors on our road that 40 years ago, and I think that some members of the selectmen, board selectmen, understand the situation, went in front of the town and had been denied to be a public way. This is simply an exception, and it's not following due process. If you allow this, you're going to allow every other private way in the town the ability to come before the board and to put it to a vote. This is an exception. And I simply ask that the voters tonight vote no. I would ask Mr. Danahue, if he could, as a dissenting vote, for his comments on this. He stood up for the voters and for consistency, and I applaud him for that. And with that, I thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Now, several of you, well, a couple of you who've already spoken are standing in line, but under the bylaws, I'm obliged to recognize people who have not yet spoken before I return to those who have spoken. Gentlemen on the right.
Mr. Moderator, Decker Adams, 162 Bullwash Farm Road. Pardon me. I'm confused. Do these roads meet the town's standards or not?
To answer the question, Mr. Murray.
Yes, they will, sir. The situation here is that because of all that money that was spent from the bond that addressed every single aspect of the roads, everything, all on the sides and all that sort of stuff, okay? The issue about the timing is very important here. Because it took so long to get through all that bond sort of stuff, the town's policy and the town's guideline is that it not accept roads that have not been repaved older than 10 years. And because it took so long to get through the insurance company and through all that, the roads, which are in reasonably good shape, these are not filled with tons of potholes and everything. If you drive up there, they're perfectly okay. That decade has been missed by two years. So it's, if all those legal hassles hadn't come up in the bond and all those other things hadn't happened, we'd be within that decade, and this would have sailed right through, because everything would have been accepted, because of all that money spent on the bond. And that's the critical difference with these other streets, which are in fact going through the process just as these guys have, just as this group is going through the process. So it's an exceptional circumstance, but there's no exception really being applied here. They've gone through the same process as other roads are, but they've had that delay built in because of all the insurance company and the bonding and all that sort of thing. So yeah, the roads are, the whole roads are all ready to go.
Sir.
But they have not been repaved. They have not been repaved in 10 years.
They have not been repaved in 12 years, I think.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Let's see. Lady to my left has already spoken. Gentlemen to my right.
This is Peter Laban, 22 Bridle Lane. As a new resident to the area, we just moved into Situate in May last year. We moved into the, into the neighborhood of Walnut Tree Hill, but also to the neighborhood of Situate. And our understanding was that we were moving into a public road within the larger community of Situate. There was never a discussion of this being a private way, and in fact, we understand that this community has essentially been in limbo, not being accepted by the town and still being forced to deal with the issues of the, you know, the bond and so on. And so therefore, we really joined the community with the intent of being accepted as a resident as any other, any other resident would be in a public way within Situate. If our roads are 10 years old and they need to be repaired on average after 20 years or 30 years, just as any other neighborhood in Situate, so be it. So I think the desire is that we join the larger community of Situate Public Streets and be accepted on that basis and wait in line and take our turn for the repairs that may be required at that time. Nothing more, nothing less.
Gentlemen at the center.
Charlie Murphy, 43 Walnut Hill Drive. Again, one of the big differences, I think, from some of the people that spoke earlier is we were never intended to be a private way. When the development was put together and the bond was posted, and as Rick has pointed out, had this occurred during the normal timeframe, this would have come before you back in 2003, 2004, well within the 10-year timeframe. So I think our circumstances are different. There were some delays. Again, it was a complicated issue with the bonding company and Modern Continental, but we feel that the situation, we as residents and the people that have partnered with us from the town have saw us to this point so far. $850,000 of work was done about a year and a half ago, and anybody who drives through there will realize that those streets are in very good shape right now, and we're not looking for the town to come up and do a repavement anytime soon. So we'd be in the normal schedule as the rest of the town would be at this point.
Gentlemen to my left.
My name is Brian Chason. I'm from 64 Walnut Hill Drive. I also just want to reiterate again that this, the premise that we're dealing with here is unusual. We never, you know, the differentiating factor here being that this was never a private way. We don't own the road. None of us acquired homes within this subdivision on the knowledge that we did own the road. So I just want to bring that clarification, just to think about when you're making your vote. Also, just a point of clarity with respect to pavement, through the efforts, combined efforts of a lot of people in this room, you know, a good portion of these roads have in fact been repaved. The back hills have been repaved, the entrance points have been repaved. So it's not only the factors around not being a private way, never being a private way, but also the work that's been done to date. So just to point that on record. Thank you.
Gentlemen to my right.
Hello.
Can you hear me? There we go. Steve Bjorkman, 15 Cap'n Denilich Field Lane. I live in the Indian Winds subdivision, which was built back in the 80s. We're probably nine years behind on getting our road paved, so I don't think I'd worry too much about when they're going to pave the roadway or when they're going to get their road paved. It's going to happen when it happens. That's all there is to it. But, I mean, I try to come into town meeting and think about everybody as one town. And the fact that somebody's house might be worth more than somebody else's house, well, they're paying more taxes than the other person. So their tax dollars are going to fixing your roads. I'd like to know, if I can, if somebody can answer me as to when this 10-year policy actually came into effect.
Chairman Harris to answer the question.
It's not really a 10-year policy, Steve, but what Kevin has told us, the life expectancy of a road is 20 years. Therefore, this road was half worn out. So therefore, he said that he felt to get this, you know, accepted, his recommendation to us was to have it ground and resurfaced.
Okay. And please, Kevin, don't take this the wrong way, but I know you've been in town for a couple of years with DPW. I've had a lot of roads approved in this town that I've built over the years. This is a new policy since we've had a new DPW in town. And a lot of the older private roads that are out there were deplorable, and they needed to be brought up into some shape, not up to subdivision control law, because they can't do that unless they completely rebuild the whole road. But Walnut Tree Hill was built under the new subdivision control law, and these people need a break, and they're paying taxes in this town. So I'd move the question.
You might have been late coming to the meeting. In the original instructions I gave to the voters, you may not make a speech and then move the question.
I will second.
But if somebody else wants to move the question, I think the audience is probably ready. Gentlemen to my right.
My name's Stephen Coulter from Beechtree Farm Road. We happen to be one of these streets that in, I believe, 2011 went through the process of the street acceptance. Our street had been newly repaved in 2008, yet as a condition of the street acceptance, we were required to, at the cost of $60,000 or $6,000, have it resurfaced, and we each, nine houses, received betterment of $6,000 or $7,000. Now we hear about some 10-year rule or whatever, and we were told at the time that the idea was that now that the town is on the hook for maintenance of the street and at some point it would need to be replaced, that they want to make sure that it's completely up to snuff and that no deferred maintenance or whatever was being placed on the burden of the taxpayers. I sympathize with the residents of Walnut Hill and the issues that you had with the developer and whatnot. The issue that I have is that the town needs to be consistent in the way it follows procedures and make sure that some homeowners are not treated in one way and other homeowners, for whatever reason, are treated in a different way. The fact that you have other subdivisions that were assessed betterments to resurface roads or to do whatever, and others are not, I think it's clearly a slippery slope, and it's opening Pandora's Box, and you're going to have a whole lot of angry taxpayers, including me, who's on the hook for a pretty substantial betterment to redo a road that was not 10 years old. I think the question is, and I think the advisory committee hit the nail right on the head, is being consistent with the policy and averting potential problems down the road with people that come before the board, looking to get the street accepted. And I think it's important that regardless of situations and sympathies, that we stick with policy and make sure that the rules are being applied fairly and equally across the board. Thank you.
Gentlemen at the center of the mic.
George B. Kelly, 450 Country Way. Mr. Moderator, the name of the street is wrong. It is not Woolworth. We don't have any, do not have any Woolworth in Situate. It's Woodworth. Thank you.
Say we haven't had Woolworths around here in years. Anyway. Oh, Selectman Murray says he read it as Woodworth. Gentlemen to my left. Ma'am, have you spoken already on this article?
Oh, yes.
Sorry. You have to wait until everyone who has not yet spoken has their turn. Gentlemen to my left.
Lincoln Heineman, 1st Parish Road. Mr. Moderator, move the question.
A motion to move the question terminates debate. It requires a two-thirds vote and is not debatable. If you wish to terminate debate on this question, you may vote yes. If you wish to hear more debate, you may vote no. All those in favor of terminating debate signify by saying aye. All those opposed, I declare the unanimous vote to terminate debate. We now come to the motion, which is, I'm, oh, yeah, that was unanimous. I move to vote to accept Walnut Hill Drive, Garrison Drive, Woodworth Lane, Bridle Lane, and Greenbrier Way as laid out by the Board of Selectmen as public ways. I have been informed that these ways are shown on a subdivision plan, which means that the quantum of vote is majority rather than two-thirds. So it will take a majority vote to accept the selectmen's layout of these ways. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed? The chair is in doubt. Will the tellers take their places? If you intend to vote, I'd ask that you take a seat. You have been issued with pink voting cards. The tellers will only count the cards. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your pink voting card. We all set, tellers? Okay. Right rear bleacher? 20. Right front bleacher? Frank? What? No, thank you. Right rear floor? Jack? 13, 13. Right center floor? Tom?
13.
13, 13. Right front floor, including the advisory committee and school committee? Penny? Thank you. Left rear bleacher? Ann? 2, 4. Left front bleacher? Peter?
3.
3. Left rear floor? George?
12.
Thank you.
12.
12, 1, 2. Left center floor? Susan?
25, 25.
2, 5. Thank you. And left front floor includes the moderator? No, it doesn't. Clerk, selectmen, and registrars? Rich?
6.
6. All right. All those opposed, please raise your pink voting card. All right, we all set? Okay. Frank, you all sat there? Okay, hold on. Right rear bleacher?
18.
1, 8. Right front bleacher? Frank? 5? 9. Right rear floor? Jack?
19.
1, 9. Right center floor? Tom?
13.
1, 3. Right front floor, including advisory committee and school committee? Penny? 1, 8. Left rear bleacher? Ann? 1, 8. Left front bleacher? Peter?
2.
2. Left rear floor? George?
15, 1, 5.
1, 5. Left center floor? Susan?
7.
7. Left front floor includes the clerk, selectmen, and registrars? Rich?
3.
3. That's what that looks like. That's what you got. Okay. All right, I'll read it off. By a vote of 130 in favor and 122 against, the motion passes. Article 19, Selectman Danahue.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve the zoning bylaws printed in the handout provided to voters at this meeting.
Is there a second? Selectman, Selectman Harris, seconds. Discussion, Mr. Danahue.
Yes.
Or actually, Mr. Danahue, could you hold up the handout just so the people know what they've got there?
Everybody get this? It was at the entryway. It's kind of helpful, if you have it, to take a look at it. It's a packet that actually has like articles 19, 20, and 21, I think it is, that's listed there. And this is the very, one of the first ones. Just to share with you, this is a zoning change, an article. It's actually an amendment to increase some of the designation in the Green Bush area. In particular, in 2005, the town accepted overlay districts in the various business districts, North Situate, Harbor, Hummerock, and also Green Bush. This one is just increasing the area that has the overlay district to include certain areas, and that's why I'm asking if you have it. There's a map on it. In particular, we're looking to increase density, and this is a part of the initiative of trying to put density into certain areas because of the travelability with the train and trying to maximize it. In this case, we're looking to try to expand certain areas, which is including the Dunkin' Donuts, so you could put apartments there potentially in the future. I doubt that's going to happen to Dunkin' Donuts, given all the profit that they get every day. But Herring Brook Mall's another one. The Auto Parts Place, you'll notice that when you're going down the Driftway and leaving. The Harbor Medical Building, for you, for those of you who know, and also the MBTA parking lot. Now, do we anticipate a lot of development there? No, because we haven't had an awful lot in the past seven years, nine years, in Green Bush. But the expectation, given that we have James Landing and the Riverway, that some of these parcels that are closer to the, the North River and the scenic view, that yes, indeed, more and more people are going to want to try to sell those to maximize it for profitability. But that's a part of the thinking and the process of the master plan that we've looked at, in trying to put more density into these certain areas to make them more viable. So with this article, what we're proposing, along with the planning board, is to just increase this overlay district into these areas to afford these properties the opportunity for more density, which would include probably condos or apartments. And that's pretty much it, folks. It was unanimous by the Board of Selectmen. I'll ask the chairman of the planning board, Bill Limbacher, to maybe add some more to it.
From the planning board, Mr. Limbacher.
It's well past my bedtime. Let me read, you read the required report. The planning board hereby reports-
Bill, could you move up to the mic? I can't hear you.
The planning board, is that better?
Yeah.
Hereby reports that in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, a public hearing was held on this article on February 27, 2014, and continued to March 27, 2014, at which time the public hearing was closed, and the board voted unanimously to support passage of the article at the April 14, 2014 annual town meeting. Last fall, property owners south of the Driftway submitted an article to include their lots in the village business overlay district. The planning board was asked to review the article and report to town meeting. The intent of the village business overlay district was to allow compact mixed-use development in the village centers, particularly where transit is available. Relatively high density of up to 16 units per acre could be allowed with retail and offices on the first floor. This would not be suitable for residential areas, but would allow land with existing infrastructure to be developed efficiently. Design criteria were included so new construction would have roofs, roof lines, and facades typical of existing buildings and to blend in with the neighborhoods. 15% of the housing units must be affordable to accommodate income residents, to accommodate moderate income residents. After deliberation and study, the planning board supported a proposed expansion- After deliberation and study, the planning board supported the proposed expansion because it would allow alternative types of houses, apartments and condos, in an attractive form which would be convenient to transient and local businesses. When the board became aware of the MBTA's intention to auction a large portion of its eastern parking lot in the immediate area, the board contacted the MBTA, and with its agreement, added that parcel into the proposed rezoning. The planning board also determined the need to allow off-street buildings without retail and reduce requirements for total retail, which are also contained in the article. The proposed expanded district is supported by the Economic Development Commission, market study dated March two thousand and fourteen. The planning board supports this article. Copy's been given to the town clerk. Just kind of a few comments. This district was established at the two thousand and six ATM, and at the two thousand and thirteen ATM, there was a citizen petition to expand the overlay district area. At that time, it was felt that additional information was required, so the article was referred back to the planning board. The article before you is a result of that review. I refer you to the language that shows the increased area, changes to the bylaw language, and supporting verbiage for the proposed language. Stated simply, the overlay district allows for the planning board to approve, by special permit, mixed-use development with retail on the first floor and residential above. The primary difference between the commercial and the overlay district is the permitted increase density for residential units and a provision of affordable units. Studies have shown that people living in the business districts support the local businesses, and the increased number of apartments provide for transit-based development and an alternative to single homes. The bylaw supports the density while still retaining the character of the neighborhood. The rationale for expanding the district at this time is multifold. The MBA is, MBTA, is selling a portion of their parking lot at Green Bush, and having this zoning in place provides potential for a higher use. The expanded area is in concert with Phase One of the EDC's Economic Development Study, which addresses the actual visual gateway into Situate and to the Harbor, and increased tax base and increased economic activity while providing realistic housing choices for young families and empty nesters. The planning board asks for your support.
From the advisory board, Jeffrey Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As discussed, this article is amending the boundaries of the current village overlay district in the Driftway by adding the additional proposed lots and new definitions, specifically the idea of mixed-use property. Advisory sees this as pretty straightforward. I mean, the needed, this is, this is a critical area of town, and this is a needed development as the existing village business district was developed in 2005, prior to the addition of the Green Bush line. Now that we have the Green Bush commuter line, this has changed the, you know, the dynamic of this area from, from travel patterns, from pedestrian patterns, and this is a necessary step to, to enhance what we see as a critical gateway to our town. You know, it's the feeling of the committee that any development must be designed with careful consideration to local ecology, to the traffic and pedestrian patterns, and with a, an idea of the, the identity of the, of the town at its core when, when considering any, any development that's to be proposed. Furthermore, as Mr. Limbacher mentioned, the MAPC study, Phase One of the Metropolitan Area Planning Committee, uh, Commission, rather, findings support this article. This is, you know, bottom line is, there's not that much developable lands that we have for commercial use, for mixed use. We have a lot of projects in front of us over the next bunch of years, and, you know, the money's got to come from somewhere. It's going to come from either increasing taxes or increasing our commercial tax base. I'm in favor of the latter, so, as I said, advisory was in unanimous support of this article and voted it seven to zero. Thank you.
Gentleman at the center, Mike.
Larry Gilmet, thirty-nine oh, Hurst, wrote, "I have three questions regarding this warrant for the planning commission. With respect to the considerations by the board, and probably, I'm assuming, it's consultants, what is the potential upset build-out, or potential number of, maximum number of residential units and the square footage of retail that is in this, in this warrant? Number two, what modeling has been done with respect to this potential for tax revenues, and perhaps over what period of time? Number three, under mixed-use development and the bonus density requirements, how will height limits be determined?"
Mr. Limbacher.
Laura Harbaugh, town planner, just provided some additional information for me. In looking at the entire area, it looks like it could be up to a hundred and eighty, uh, residential units. I think the question was, what, height?
No, the second one was, what's the, the total square footage of potential retail?
Uh, that would depend, because each one would come in on its own. What we've looked at is the ability to put up to fifty percent retail on the first floor, and it's driven by floors, right? The intent is, once you've come back and you've got, it matches to the business request you have, obviously, that if I have a florist, I have, going to need less room than if I have some other alternative.
No, no, I, I understand that, but given the setbacks, the amount of space that's here, the amount of land that's potentially could be developed, you must have some idea of what the square footage of this expanded area is, no?
The town planner to address the question.
Did you want the, the amount of retail square footage?
That, that was my question on the expanded area. Potentially, how much, how many square feet of, of retail might be part of this?
The answer is, we really didn't try to project that.
Then you probably didn't also project what the potential expanded tax revenues could be?
No, but based on the hundred and eighty units, I think it's, you know, probably not that difficult to project something from that.
Well, yeah, I guess the question is, you're, you're...
Two-hundred and fifty...
Why, why wasn't it done?
Um, with the retail square footage, I think it's, it's practically speaking, not really very easy to do, because...
I think it is, well, with all the...
Well, hold on, hold on.
Okay. No, I won't, I won't debate anymore. My third question is...
Some of those Fox TV shows.
That's right, no, that's right. My third, my third question is, how's height going to be, be determined?
I'm sorry, the, the third question was, the height?
Yeah.
Yep, the height would be the same as what's there now. There wouldn't be any increase in height.
So you're going to allow people to park with, underneath the buildings? Would the parking be below grade or above grade, and then the structures be built above that?
The parking below grade is only allowed in Situate Harbor.
Below grade in Situate Harbor?
This was done a number of years ago, and that might not have been, you know, that might be something we need to rethink, but the parking below grade would not, would not occur in Green Bush or in North Situate.
Okay, so that's, that's, that's to the point of my question. My question is, if it is not below-grade parking, if it's at-grade parking, what would be the maximum height of the buildings above the parking grade?
It would be the same as what's allowed now, which is, I believe it's forty...
Forty feet?
Yep, it's, it's three, three stories or forty feet, whichever is lower, and, and that's what's allowed now in that area.
I guess, well, thank you for that, but my question is, at forty feet above the top of the parking, from the, from the, from the first floor of residents to the top?
From, from the average finished grade. That's the same way it's measured all throughout Situate.
Okay, so there'd be, okay, thank you. That answers my question.
Gentleman on my left. Ms. Harbaugh, why don't you just stay put? Seem to be some technical questions.
No, that's all right. Colin McNeese, eight Dunbar Lane. I'm the vice chairman of the Economic Development Commission. It's been mentioned a couple of times tonight, the MAPC study that we commissioned. We've completed Phase One of that. We have looked at this proposal. Bill, thank you for all of your attendance and putting up with our meetings, but we've discussed this several times. The commission took a vote on it. We do support the proposal. We do think that this development type at Green Bush is appropriate. If we have parcels that are going to transact in the near future, we want to make sure that they transact for use that we want, rather than something that we don't, because if, if that happens now, we are subject to locking into a land use that could be there for generations, whereas we now have a train coming into town and the opportunity to do something that isn't really possible to do in much of Situate. And to the gentleman who's asking about retail projections, we did not look at parcel-specific retail projections, but the MAPC study did look at market demand in Situate and the types of businesses, industries we could support. There are only a few locations where we could do that. Green Bush is one of them, that can support mixed-use development, and that's why we thought this was an appropriate site to make this change, and the Economic Development Commission supports this amendment.
Gentleman to my left.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Richard Stower, forty Whittier Drive.
Right.
I'm concerned with this warrant article on the effect of the quality of water in town. Mr. Snow had listed earlier the, the number of projects in the recent past and the current past, including a twelve-plus development behind my house on Whittier Drive. My recollection is that a number of years ago, and I brought this question up to the planning board, and I didn't get a clear answer or definitive answer. My recollection is, a number of years ago, there was an issue about the water capacity in town, and that, at that time, we were at ninety-eight percent of water capacity. With all this development in town and with the planning and the expectation that there will be more development in the Green Bush area, high-density development in the Green Bush area, my question is, at, at the time when we were talking about water capacity, there was also the thought about dredging Herringbrook Pond. That, I think, disappeared. I haven't heard about it in ten years. So my question is, what is the planning for this increased capacity on our water capacity?
Ms. Harbaugh or Mr. Limbacher?
I think we're in agreement. We want to defer to the water supervisor from the DBW who's here.
Well, with the business districts, we really don't worry about it as much as residential with the water usages, but we are looking at, we're doing a study at the moment right now on increasing the capacity of the reservoir somewhat about a foot and a half, two feet, about fifty billion plus gallons of water that we'd be able to process through the plant. We're also looking at a well that we have that was decommissioned a few years ago that's actually been pumped directly into the Green Bush Pond, which in turn, we're going to see if we're going to get that back into, into the system, which that's about, equates to about three hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. So, as we speak with water, we are working on our extra resources on addressing these issues.
All right, seeing no one else at the mics. This is a zoning amendment. It requires a two-thirds vote, there being no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
So voted and declared a two-thirds vote. If any seven persons wish to challenge my determination, they may rise now. Article twenty. On the motion, Selectman O'Toole.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town insert new language into the zoning bylaws fully set out in the warrant.
Is there a second? Seconded Chairman Harris. Discussion, Mr. O'Toole.
This is, this is a necessary thing. This, the marijuana dispensaries are going to be, aren't going anywhere. The Attorney General allowed a moratorium from April two thousand and thirteen till May first of two thousand and fourteen. So the planning board has worked diligently on this, along with other people in town. What it's going to ensure is, we're not going to have, if, if we do have a dispensary, it's not going to be in any of our business districts. It will be more in the commercial and industrial areas. The article's supported by the police chief, the school superintendent, and the former director of public health, as well as the Board of Selectmen.
From the advisory board, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As mentioned, a moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries was adopted in April of two thousand and thirteen and expires in May. I think it's important to note, no medical marijuana dispensaries are proposed in Situate at this time, but you never know, there could be in future years. State requires them to be at least five hundred feet from schools and other locations where children's activities are held. We would certainly want to have it at least that, if not further. Advisory Committee recommends approval of the article, and we did unanimously support this, seven to zero.
And Mr. Limbacher of the planning board to give us the planning board report.
Planning board report to town meeting, Article twenty, registered marijuana dispensaries. The planning board hereby reports in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, a public hearing, a public hearing was held on this article on February twenty-seventh, two thousand and fourteen, and continued to March twenty-seventh, two thousand and fourteen, at which time the public hearing was closed, and the board voted unanimously to support passage of this article in the April fourteenth, two thousand and fourteenth annual town meeting. The medical use of marijuana is a complex issue with many social and economic ramifications. The planning board has drafted a bylaw that regulates where a dispensary could be located if approved by the Commonwealth in Situate. If it requires any dispensary, it requires any dispensary to meet the Department of Public Health regulations issued last year, including requirements for a fifty-foot, five-hundred-foot separation from facilities or activities involving children such as schools, library, and recreation areas. It also provides for the sharing of security information with the police department. This bylaw replaces a moratorium effective until May first, two thousand and fourteen. The planning board supports this article.
Discussion from the floor. There being no one at the mics, the zoning bylaw amendment requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared a two-thirds vote. Article twenty-one. On the motion, Selectman Murray.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the zoning map as printed in the handout provided to voters at this meeting.
Seconded by Selectman O'Toole. Discussion, Mr. Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll be brief. This warrant article has a lot to it, including limiting impervious area to twenty percent within the Zone A district, which will provide additional protection to the water supply. It allows for field verification of zoning district lines by professionals or the mass DEP where there is uncertainty. Updates to the zoning map that are required by the state DEP, so we are consistent with federal and state drinking water regulations. The Board of Selectmen unanimously voted in support of this, and we would also like to thank Mr. John Clarkson, who is chair of our Water Resources Committee and his entire committee, for all the work they have done on behalf of these important improvements.
From the planning board, Mr. Limbacher.
For those of you keeping score, this is my last report. Planning board report to town meeting, Article twenty-one, Water Resource Protection District Zoning Bylaw, Section five-twenty, and the town's Situate zoning map. The planning board hereby reports that in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, public hearing was held on this article on February twenty-seventh, two thousand and fourteen, and continued until March twenty-seventh, two thousand and fourteen, at which time the public hearing was closed, and the board voted unanimously to support passage of the article at the April fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen annual town meeting. The changes to the zoning map will identify areas where groundwater contributes to public wells and buffers the freshwater resources which feed the town reservoir. Changes in the Water Resource Protection District in the zoning bylaw will better protect these sensitive areas and prevent contamination from harming the town's water drinking, drinking water supply. These changes are required by the State's Department of Environmental Protection as a condition for their approval for the town's drinking water supply. The Water Resource Commission has drafted the article, and the planning board strongly supports their efforts. And John Clarkson will give the presentation.
Go ahead, John.
My name is John Clarkson. I'm chairman of the Water Resources Committee. The other members of the committee include Becky Malamud, Maura Quinn, and...
The other members of the committee include Becky Malamud, Maura Quinn, and Martha Cook. I am, realize this late, I'm going to try to move through this as quickly as possible, and I appreciate everyone's patience staying with us tonight. The Water Resources Committee worked with the Planning Board, as well as the Selectmen, in our role as the Advisory Committee to the Selectmen, helping redraft this bylaw. Massachusetts, the water is held as a public trust, and local bylaws in the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection oversee water quality as well as water quantity issues. There are also federal laws, such as the Clean Water Act, that help protect our water quality. In Situate, the Water Department provides water under a Water Management Act permit issued by the Massachusetts DEP, and these permits help protect public health by overseeing the quality of the water in our public drinking water supply. And this next slide will refer somewhat to the question asked on the earlier item. While most communities rely on groundwater or surface water supplies, Situate is a bit unique in that it relies upon both groundwater and surface water sources. The Water Management Act permits are renewed every 20 years. The permits, there's something missing. Keep going. Keep hitting it, keep hitting it, keep hitting it. There we go. There are 27 watersheds in Massachusetts, and each year, the Mass. DEP picks particular watersheds through a cycle in which to renew their permits. Next slide. We live in the South Coastal watershed, and our permit is now due for renewal. A list of the other South Coastal watershed communities are also shown. Cohasset has already adopted bylaws similar to what we are voting on tonight, and these bylaws will help protect the water quality aspects of our public water supply. Next slide. The bylaws before you will bring Situate in line with state and federal regulations regarding the protection of our water resources. We have made every attempt to make them clear and simple for everyone to follow, putting the protective measures in a table format. A sample of that format appears here, and if you read the warrant, it is the table, the full table is in the warrant. Next slide. The Water Protection District will serve as an overlay district, and has already been reviewed and improved by Mass. DEP, which should help facilitate our permit renewal. Our permit renewal is really beginning right now, and we, we need to have these revised bylaws in place in order for our water management permit to move forward. Next slide. Whoop, back one. And there's the map. So, the district itself maintains the key features included when the district was first adopted. It features a watershed approach to water quality protection, but further defines those areas impacting surface water supplies, identified as Zone As, and those areas impacting groundwater supplies, identified as Zone 2s. As part of the bylaws, a guidance map will also be included. This map is primarily based on the latest GIS technology. Moving forward, the bylaw does allow for field verification of features depicted on the map for town boards, such as the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission, to consider when reviewing project applications. Now the next slide. The Situate Water Department, the Water Resources Committee, the Planning Board, the Advisory Board, the Board of Selectmen, as well as the North and South Water River Watershed Association, all support this bylaw. And tonight, I come here to ask for your vote to adopt this bylaw as well. Thank you very much.
What a wonderfully concise presentation. From the Advisory Board, Karen Conlon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory Committee is mindful of the fact that the adoption of these bylaws and the, the map will place certain restrictions on certain property owners. We understand that, and after a lot of debate, we came to the realization that adopting these bylaws and this regulation and the map are in the best interests of the town in protecting its water supply. So, the Advisory Committee voted unanimously in favor of the article, and we recommend approval of the motion. Thank you.
All right, discussion. There being no one at the mics. Approval of this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, go ahead to the mic.
I'm sorry, keep it brief. Peter Kelly Delweiler, 114 Tilden Road. It should also be noted that the North and South River Watershed Association and the town of Situate just received a grant of $54,000 to study...